Good evening. This workshop meeting of the SICOR ISD Board of Trustees will come to order. The date is Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, and the time is 5:34 PM. And we have a confirmed quorum. Thank you for joining us for this meeting, both in person and online via our YouTube stream. The full recording of the meeting will be available on YouTube and archived through the board website, where viewers have the option of watching the meeting with closed captions translated in multiple languages. Gracias por acompañarnos en esta reunión, tanto en persona como en línea a través de nuestra transmisión de YouTube. La grabación completa de la reunión estará disponible en YouTube y se archiverá a través del sitio web de la junta, donde los espectadores tienen la opción de ver la reunión con subtítulos traducidos a varios idiomas. All right, if everyone will please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We didn't have any speakers sign up for open forum, so we will continue then with the board workshop, Employee Benefit Plan Options. Mr. Carmona, please.
Good afternoon, Board President Nahara, Superintendent Mr. Vazquez, members of the board, Mario Carmona, Director of Employee Benefits and Wex Management. Today I will be presenting, may I proceed?
We're just waiting for the presentation to come up on our screens.
There we go. Well, no.
Nope.
The agenda comes up, however, so the agenda is displayed, but the presentation does not. There it is. Ready, sir? Nope. Just kidding. It's gone. There it is again.
If I can bring her up.
Let's try.
Go ahead, sir.
Let's try one more time. In today's presentation, I'll be covering our current health plan options, the recommendations of the Employee Benefits Advisory Committee, and additional funding strategies for the 2026 plan year. For the 2025 plan year, which runs January through December, we continue to offer three health plan options. Those are the Consumer Driven Health Plan, the base, of which employees can opt in or opt out, but only to the Consumer Driven Health Plan or to the base plan. As a reminder, the premier plan is one of the options that currently is not accepting new enrollees. In addition to that, there is no, there is the rates on the slide for the current options, and you'll see the three options, again, the Consumer Driven Health Plan, the base plan, and the premier plan. And this will be a point of reference that you will be seeing on the upcoming slides. As a reminder, I'm going to go over some of the information that was provided by the chair, and vice chair of the Employee Advisory Committee. Their recommendations included a increase in contributions of 117 per employee per month, and this was in addition to the current rates offered through the base plan. Excuse me. Moving from three plan offerings to two plans, from the premier, base, and consumer driven with health savings account to consumer driven and base plan, modify coverage levels and deductibles, and encourage migration from the premier and the base plan to the Consumer Driven Health Plan. In addition, the committee made a recommendation in respect to cost containment measures, and that includes pharmacy benefits and results-driven wellness and preventive care programs. Those are offered through Aetna, Diabetes Smart Edit, and well-ly weight loss utilization management, in addition to renegotiating vendor contracts. And lastly, reserve allocation, a one-time infusion from the general fund over to the health fund, and continue to evaluate long-term sustainability. The presentation including, included the information you see on the slide, and the arrow is pointing to the amount that potentially could be the deficit for the plan year 2026. Now, it's important to mention that this is based on a forecast, and the forecast is either based on a rolling 12 months or in based on current claims experience. The strategy options to address a deficit included, as I mentioned earlier, moving from a three-plan offering to a two-plan offering, and in your presentation or in your handout, you'll see the current three-plan designs compared to or side by side to the plans that would be offered to 2026. Cost containment includes the Diabetes Smart Edit, a program offered by Aetna, and a weight loss utilization management program as well. Again, the recommendations from the advisory committee was a hybrid approach, and if we were to move forward with the recommendations from the committee, that could potentially result in a four, 9.4 million deficit. During that last workshop, we were asked to bring some additional options, and that's the information that's new in this case. That information is for the 2026 plan year, and as I mentioned, the plans essentially will continue to offer the same type of benefits, but those would change to the Consumer Driven Plan with a health savings account. The school district will continue to offer or contribute $800 per employee annually, and the co-pay, co-payment plan, which will also offer the same type of coverage with a different plan design. Both options offer the two tiers, a flexibility of the two tiers, the ACO or the Accountable Care Organization, which is affiliates with Hospitals of Providence, and the PPO, which is the Preferred Provider Organization, or any Preferred Provider Organization in network with Aetna specifically. In terms of cost containment, we look at three plan, or three programs specifically. The Diabetes Smart Edit to prevent coverage of label utilization of diabetes drugs while minimizing member impact. Weight Loss Utilization Management to ensure appropriate utilization of weight management drugs. And lastly, the CVS Weight Management Program to provide personalized support tailored to individual needs, which includes a dedicated registered dietitian, provider engagement, and behavioral health. In your handout, I'll go over some of the options that are new to this presentation, if you will. The first one you've seen before, which includes the current rates, the 2026 rates for the base option plus 117, with an unfunded liability of about 9.4 million. You'll see that I'm pointing to the current district contribution and the monthly employee contribution specifically, and the potential deficit, if that was to be the option selected. If you needed to make a comparison with the current rates, that's provided in the table below on the slide. The next option is 2026 rates with two plans fully funded, and you'll see again the district current monthly contribution per employee, the proposed employee contribution on a monthly basis, and what the deficit could potentially be for the 2026 year. But I like to point out again that any unfunded liability amount would be in addition to the 555 that the school district is currently contributing per employee. And lastly, our current rates as well, in case you needed to make that comparison. Next, we have two, 2026 rates with two plans and a 3 million deficit, current contribution, employee monthly contribution. I'd like to draw your attention again to the employee unfunded liability, which is, can't see from here, apology. Yes, no, I'm sorry, the monthly amount. Fifty, fifty dollars and nine cents, if I'm not mistaken. Yes? Okay, on a monthly basis per employee. So if the question was, how much will that translate to employee per month, it will be the fifty dollars. And then, of course, that will total down to the 2.3, 2.9, or almost 3 million in a deficit. In addition to that, the current rates are listed as well. Next, the 2026 rates with a two-plan, 5 million deficit, same information, you'll see the district contribution, the potential or the employee proposed rate, what the deficit could end up being, and the current monthly cost per employee per month. And again, one amount that we will have to make sure that we keep an eye on is the deficit contribution per employee. So in this case, it would be the 8348. Lastly, just at a glance, so you can see the options that I just went over side by side, you see the Benefits Advisory Committee recommendation, the fully funded plan, meaning anticipating a zero deficit, a 3 million deficit plan, and lastly, a 5 million deficit plan. Of course, the Employee Benefits Advisory Committee will continue to meet to evaluate the performance of the health plan and make additional recommendations for the year 2027. Even though we're talking about year 2027 already, just keep in mind that we're most likely be settling recommendations for the plan year 2026, even though the plan year 2025 has not concluded yet. So all this is based on a forecast, based on consumption, so we will continue to bring over information. I don't know that at this point, there's any questions or anything that I could clarify.
Mr. Carmona, I had requested like a three-year plan. I didn't see it in the presentation.
No, sir. The only options that we brought forth was on a, let's say that we wanted to see a three-year plan, it will be based on the deficit that will be considered for the year 2026.
Well, the reason I bring it up is at one point, we had a five-year plan, and we dropped the deficit down from $9 million to $4 million. That's what I was asking about, if we could go back and possibly look at a three-year plan.
Hi, good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, and Mr. Vazquez. Selena Stiles, Chief Human Resources Officer for the district. Yes, Mr. Gara, you are correct, we did have a plan like that at one point. To create a plan like that, it's going to be very difficult at this point, because depending on what decisions we make here, there's a lot of things that can happen. We could lose participation in the plan, which will drop our revenue, and that's going to, where we could say, we want the balanced budget, it could result in still a deficit, because if we lose revenue, that type of thing. So to Mario's point, I think we kind of have to plan for 2026 to start projecting how we want the next couple of years to look, and if we want to carry that kind of deficit, then what that looks like going forward.
Mr. Woodcraft?
Thank you. So as I'm looking at the plan options at a glance, under the base plan, between the advisory committee recommendation all the way through the 5 million deficit, premiums are just about going to double under almost every option. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So when do we, when does the 2026 plan year start?
January 1st, 2026.
And so when do we need to make a decision to meet that date for implementation?
So we do have to have a period of open enrollment, especially if there's changes to any of the plans that are being offered. We typically have a 30-day window for people or for employees to review their options and make their selections for the following plan year, but in this case, we, the school district, has to provide the data over to our carriers no later than the first week of December to be able to generate ID cards and for those cards to be mailed out on a timely manner. So my point is that we would work ourselves backward from that first week of December.
One thing that the board could consider is taking a vote after the Vader. That, that could impact your, how you vote and which plans we decide to choose or which options. Currently, based on our fund balance situation, we just don't have the money to cover some of the bigger deficit plans. However, that could change depending on what happens with the Vader, and it may, and it may alter how you, how you ultimately decide to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Vazquez. That was, that was almost my next question, and I may tie Mr. Solis into this one as well. So when we take into account the Vader, if it passes, that would bring in about $49 million of additional revenue, which means that in theory, we have a little bit of flexibility if we were to go with the back recommendation of infusing a one-time surplus. That's good for one year. What's the plan after that, if that's the route we choose?
And that, and you said that actually the magic words is a one-year plan. We could, we could delay this and we can cushion it for a year. We have to remember that, you know, with the $49 million, that's something that, you know, we have to be very thoughtful with what, what we, how we spend that money. We have infinite needs in the district with HVAC and technology and so forth, so those are other things we can consider, but we can also consider how we cushion this for a year until ultimately we have a fully funded plan.
Yeah, and so, two, two big concerns, right? As, and I mentioned it last one, right? Like this is an imperative decision that we have to make, like we cannot get this wrong. And so, one, this will be a significant emotional event for every employee, regardless of which way we choose, and so we need to make sure that we do it right, and we do it thoughtful, and we do it purposeful. The second part of that is we have a lot of needs within the district, and we have to choose where we apply our resources carefully. And so even as I'm looking at these options at a glance, looking at a, a possible hybrid, like a partial one-time infusion, but we still need to make adjustments later, you know, those incremental steps towards getting healthy may be a better option now than just all at once, because it's going to be significant, and we want to minimize that impact as much as possible. If we make believe, because no later than one December, we have to get, well, before I get to that far, in theory, Vader passes, we choose to go with the back recommendation, 9.5 million one-time infusion, very broad, where does that leave our, our cash on hand, general fund balance decide? What wiggle room does that give the board for options? How, how does that look?
Good evening, Board President Nahara, board members, Superintendent Vazquez, David Solis, Chief Financial Officer for the district. To answer your question, what you have to remember is, while it would be a one-time infusion, we would be carrying that 9 million on, because we would, we infuse it, but we would still have to carry that balance moving forward. So then, that 49 would now become 40 as we look forward, as we move forward, and as you've mentioned, there's other areas that the district will have to consider to, to address as we move forward, in terms of how does it affect our cash position? Should, should it pass in November, then we would get an additional 49 million in revenue, so we would be in a, in a good financial, I mean, a cash position, so to speak. I mean, the, the real question is, you know, how much of that 49 million are we going to, a lot to reoccurring items, and this would be one of those. And, and, and I think Mr. Vazquez has mentioned before, 49 million doesn't get us a whole lot, it's not a whole lot when you think about it, because the other thing that we have to consider too, and it's one of the things that came up as part of the LSG constraints, is fiscal responsibility. And part of that, as a reminder, is at the end of 2024, unassigned fund balance was only 46 million, which only represents about 33 days. We did adopt and revise the budget last year to a $24 million deficit. Now, as I mentioned, we've done, we did better last year, it's not going to be 24 million, but at the same time, we still have reduced the number of days of fund balance. The other question is, is how do we address rebuilding our fund balance, so that way we're in a better, so that we're fiscally responsible? And so those are the things that we have to remember too, is some of the things that we discussed was, were, you know, improving our fund balance position, improving cash position, but it was also, you know, as I've shared with you, the effects that the past deficits and cash positions have had on our first rating. So how do we work towards building that back and getting back to a, to a superior rating?
And I think my one follow-on question to that for now is, we haven't had a chance to discuss this, so I'm almost putting you on the spot, my apologies, my bad. What are some of the potential risks if we either take an incrementalist approach and we go with the 3 million or the 5 million deficit plan versus the back recommendation plan of a one-time 9 million infusion? What are some of those risks that we can look at as we look at the 2027 year plan that if we kick the can down the road, we're still going to have to address them in '27?
I, I think, you know, the, the risks are minimized as you have that deficit become less, so if you're looking at a $9 million infusion, the risk is probably greater, I would say, than saying a $3 million infusion, because now it's only 3 million that we would be carrying and we would have to adjust for. So I don't know if that answers your question, it's just, the more we infuse, at some point we still have to address the structural deficit within the health fund, whether that gets addressed next year or the year after. At some point, we know we have to address it, because we cannot continue to, to transfer funds from the general fund, because we, we are just not in that financial position right now. Even with the Vader passing, it's going to take several years for us to rebuild fund balance to a point where we are at 75 days. It's not going to happen in year one or year two. More than likely, we're probably looking at year three, year four, before we're in a good spot.
Yeah, and bad news doesn't get better with time, so being able to address this as early as we can, hopefully, as painless as possible, but it's going to be a significant event. And so I just want to make sure that we have all options in front of us, we're looking at some creative approaches. I know that we've had some discussions on some different approaches we could take to minimize the impact to the employees. The one request I have, and this more from Mr. Vazquez, I've been getting spoiled lately because I saw these slides in the Friday packet. What I realized today is they are not available to the public online. If you go to like the board documents, and you can select the agendas and board book, these slides aren't in there. And so I would ask if there's a way to get these so the public can see them and have them accessible as well.
Absolutely, we can, we can take care of that. One thing, just to go back to your earlier point about the Vader, if we do decide to hold off on, on this vote until November, either way, we would like to have one more workshop, I think there's some other options we'd like for you all to, to look at, and then taking us to November, it would be an abbreviated enrollment period, so we'd need it need to be done in a matter of a week or two. Uh so we'd need to need to be done in a matter of a week or two, uh but hopefully that'll give us time to make a a thoughtful decision. And how we move forward and just uh make sure that we educate our employees.
Yes, sir. And I'm all for that. Um I don't want to rush to judgment. Uh we need to weigh the options, but time is of the essence and and we need to make sure that we get it right. Um so absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh Mr. Carmona. So looking at uh. Actually, the slide that's on the screen right now, we've got basically four columns, right? If we chose to be consistent with the naming convention as we go to the right or start from the right. We would have the five million deficit plan, the three million deficit plan, the fully funded plan. And then truly the nine point five million deficit plan, right?
You are correct.
Okay, so and and I just want to be clear. So even if the back recommendation or. Synonymous equivalent to the back recommendation plus one seventeen is a nine point five million deficit, right?
That is correct, yes.
And then as I look at that column, that plus one seventeen is just. Um an increase of a hundred and seventeen. For every plan all the way down um to the column immediately to the left, right? So forty-nine dollars and eighty cents plus one seventeen. If we go all the way down to the last line in the CDHP Employee and Family, it's seven thirty-one. Uh dollars and fifty cents plus one seventeen. So that's consistent all the way down, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking this question is because if we look at the. Nine point five million deficit plan. Just let's be clear. Um and I look at the fully funded over to the right. And I look at the consumer-driven health plan, employ only. It seems um contrary maybe. That the nine point five million deficit employee only cost is one seventeen. However, the fully funded employee cost is eighty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. And I believe the reason that is like that is because. The one seventeen was distributed evenly, whereas. In the column, all the other columns to the right, is more consistently the better plan or the larger. Members a family has on the plan, the higher your cost. So. Is that or or help, help me make it easier to understand why that is?
Absolutely. So the difference would be that the recommendation for from the advisory committee. Includes current base premiums plus one seventeen. No premium premiums are listed. So if we were to look at the increase that it's required per level of coverage. You will see that from the fully funded moving forward. The nine million is based on the current plan design for the base plan and the consumer-driven. Based on, again, base plan rates. So I'll give you an example. Right now, employee only base is forty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. So what we did is we added the one seventeen that the committee proposed.
Right.
So that's as a result, since one, the advisory committee's recommendation. Holds current plan design. That's the reason why there is a greater deficit. Than any of the other options, because the other options include a plan design change already factored in to the uh. The full amounts and the deficit amount.
Okay.
Sure. If if I may, our Liz Bebo, our consultant from Hub International, would like to add.
Okay.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Uh Liz Bebo, Hub International. Uh the one um so the way that the rates and contributions are currently developed has been historically. The district will put in X dollars per employee per month, depending on the year, straight down the board. And then the increases that you vote to pass on to the employees. Those two numbers are added together to make up the total funding. On the fully funded example, we are taking the true costs of the plans by tier. And then distributing them um by tier and then deducting the percentage. That the district typically would contribute, you know, eighty percent on the employee only, fifty percent, what have you. So the way that those rates are developed, it's zero plus one seventeen. But when you step back and do a full actuarial tiering, that's where you're coming up with eighty-nine dollars. Just to clarify a little bit on.
So. In. I think what I hear you saying is that. In the plus one seventeen. The impact is consistent all the way through. However, in the other three columns to the right. The impact is distributed consistent with the cost of the tier. Okay, sounds good, which makes sense if you look at employee spout and spouse. You know, as. Our 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 children aren't that expensive on health insurance because most of their care is preventative. Which is different than, you know, I mean, just for myself, as I sit here and get older, I'm becoming more expensive now. So, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that insight. Now. If we wanted to do, say, um. A two-year plan, a three-year plan, or even a four-year plan, because what we have here is four columns, right? We could go with the back recommendation this year. Which leaves us at a nine point five million deficit then. And I know it's a huge assumption assumption. That everything stays the same because nothing ever stays the same, right? Our um. Membership in each of the different plans, ages, just all of that changes, right? Even treatments, available treatments, treatment costs, technology. All of that changes. But let's assume nothing changed, then. We could do year one, the nine point five, year two, the five million, year three, the three million, and year four, the zero. Or we could do. You know, the five million this year in the zero plan in year two, you know, whatever. So that, I mean, I I can. Visualize that, but I know that's a huge leap of faith because nothing ever stays the same.
And if I may add to that, Mr. Nakata, you're absolutely correct, because in addition to all those variables, there's additional trending. Which we normally trend uh ten percent to twelve percent increase in medical care. So. Again, we're only basing numbers on claims experience.
Right.
If uh if our population gets healthier or older or not as healthy, all those will play a role in in our financials.
Or we have another significant event which impacts healthcare overall. I mean, it's those things you just can't predict. Um. Okay, um. I don't know if you have the answer. Mr. Carmona, and maybe you don't, maybe Mr. Solis, but. One of the things that we heard from the survey. Was that we needed to address the health plan deficiency. Currently, um and it was ranked in the top five. And we're currently contributing seven to ten million dollars a year. We. Reduced the district contribution, I think it was by twenty dollars.
Correct.
Okay? If we, how how was it that the back recommendation came to one seventeen? Knowing that that was gonna result in a nine point five million dollar deficit, which does not address. The seven to ten million dollar contribution, which is one of the things that the survey revealed we needed to address.
And that's a really good question, and I think that every so often, the way our fiscal year and our plan year run is what creates some confusion. Because uh based on our financials from our finance department, they report. The contribution from the general fund over to the health fund on a fiscal year basis. We look at our plan performance January through December. So in June, we knew what the contribution was or the infusion was. But that infusion was essentially for July through December of twenty twenty-four. And January through June of twenty twenty-five. That means that. The deficit for the remainder of the twenty twenty-five calendar year has not yet been considered or reported. That is the difference between the two amounts, because depending on which department reports the information, you might get a different amount, but it's essentially, that's the reason behind it. Because finance is reporting July through June, and we are reporting claim history January through December.
Do me a favor. Go, will you go back to the analysis of? The back recommendation? And what I'm looking for is just the number at the very bottom in yellow. That's the five million?
Mr. Nakata, I know what your question is. You're asking where they came up with the one seventeen.
No.
No? Okay.
No, I just, so what I wanted, the unfunded liability of the unfunded liability under the plus one seventeen, but. That's a good one. Um. Unfunded liability is nine point five, so ultimately the district end up contributing a hundred and fifty-eight. Dollars per employee per month. Right? So even though. We reduced the contribution to try and make a positive impact by twenty dollars. That.
Correct.
Impact is null and void because in turn, at the end, we're gonna have to contribute about. A thousand. Nine hundred per employee per year.
Correct.
Okay, so and then that's next. How did they come up with one seventeen?
Right. So when we met with the committee, we shared the information we had shared with you and with the FOAC about the deficit and. Truly, it was about two hundred and thirty-four dollars that the district is contributing in addition to the five fifty-five. Right now, that's how that's being funded. So they kind of basically split it in half because um. They 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 took everything into consideration. They did think about the auxiliary personnel. Um the paraprofessional personnel and what the impact cost would be to them to make such a drastic change to the two hundred and thirty-four dollars. So that was kind of the rationale behind it. Um there are some other things to consider um. That the committee did not um include as part of it because they wanted to keep it and some of it is some of the medications that are covered. Um an example is GLP-1s. Now, they have to be covered for diabetic patients because that's a required um medication to be covered. They don't have to be covered for weight loss. So that, I think, is something we'll be back with at the next workshop. To see how that impacts premiums, because there will be, you will, we will have to fund less. It's less money that will, it's less liability, less. Things, claims that have to be funded, and so it could shift things a little bit in the employees' favor. Um it just might come down to compromising with what what um we're willing to. Consider.
Right. And just to be clear, the reason. Coverage items like that come up is because essentially. The district pays for the claims that come through, right? We don't have. Um we're a self-funded organization.
Correct.
So if we get a bill for a million dollars. There may be discounts that apply to that bill, but even if those discounts reduce that bill to five hundred thousand. The district is still issuing a check, a payment for that five hundred thousand dollars because we are self-funded.
Correct. So that's the exactly the best way to describe it as a user, as a user of the insurance. I might pay a hundred of those dollars. To go get that test done, but the district's gonna pay the remaining.
Okay.
Mr. Nakata, I have more questions though, because that was great. So my apologies, but.
I wasn't done, Mr. Woodcraft.
I'm sorry, I wait.
I'm just kidding, sir.
I thought you needed a breath, like you.
Thank you, sir.
Get some water. Uh can we go back to the plan options at a glance? So if I remember from the workshop, the advisory committee had recommended. Dropping the premier plan and sticking with base and the consumer-driven healthcare plan. One, can you remind me why? And two, can you explain the difference between the base plan and consumer-driven healthcare place?
So dropping the premier plan has a cost savings to the. Overall plan of about five million dollars. Um it's a very rich plan and the benefits themselves are not, the. Benefits are the same. What changed was the co-insurance, those kinds of things. It was just a very rich plan. So since last year, we had no new enrollment into the plan. So this year, the idea was to drop it. Which means it will force those individuals to choose between the base plan or the consumer-driven health plan. The difference between the two is when you want to pay for services. Um on the base plan, you pay monthly premiums, whether you use the plan or you don't. On the consumer-driven health plan, um if it was employee only currently at zero dollars, you don't pay for anything until you use it. And so I go to the doctor instead of paying a copay, I pay um a negotiated amount. So I might pay a hundred dollars versus the forty dollars or thirty dollars that the copay. Um plan has included on it. But I also have a health savings account that will allow me to use those funds to pay for that. So it's really a personal preference on how you choose to use it. Um I can tell you personal experience. I switched to the consumer-driven health plan this year. And I feel like I've been wasting money for for many years playing into premiums, because what I did was, whatever I was paying into premiums, I put that into my health savings account. Whenever I go to the doctor, I have money there ready to spend and use and apply to um those costs. It's just a personal preference. Of what works for you.
And is that why the consumer-driven healthcare premiums are cheaper?
Correct.
So if we're gonna get creative with this, and I'm I'm spitballing, like I'm I'm brainstorming this as I talk, so bear with me, and those watching at home, I apologize. Can we look at a way to incentivize employees switching from the base plan to the consumer-driven healthcare plan by maybe? Looking at the option of increasing the district's contribution above the five fifty-five. It may cost us a little bit more from an incentivization perspective, but it may save us in the long run. I don't know. Um I guess that's something I would leave up to the financial experts and and the healthcare professionals. Um you know, five fifty-five for the base plan, okay. But if you go with consumer-driven healthcare, maybe we'll pay six fifty, or maybe we'll pay a percentage of the increase, or maybe we'll, I don't know. But if it's. Cheaper for the district, it provides more flexibility for the employees, and and it's their choice for their family, I get that. But if it's cheaper for us, how do we incentivize them? To go with a consumer-driven healthcare plan? And even if it costs us more, it might save us in the long run. Um that that's just an ask. I don't really need an answer now, but I'd like, I would be interested to see what the numbers look like.
I believe we did something similar to that last year. Um and it was given or paid off in two. Payments, if I'm not mistaken.
Savings account, correct. But I think you're referencing the five fifty-five.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And the other option is to look at increasing the HSA amount too, from eight hundred.
Are we still considering?
I'm sorry, Ms. Garcia.
Are we still considering um giving them um that as an incentive, the HSA? Okay.
To your point, uh for the current plan year, that was one of the incentives to drive some traffic into the consumer-driven health plan. Uh school district introduced eight hundred dollars per employee per year. Um as part of the health savings account. So that uh increased our participation from about four percent over to, I think, if I. Recall correctly, twelve percent participation. So there's a couple of ways of approaching the incentive. One, it could be the district contribution and or the uh increase. The annual contribution from the district into the health savings account, because that becomes disposable income for healthcare expenses for.
I like it. And and I think, and I'm I'm okay with both, right? It's a choose your own adventure book. Pick your incentive. Which one would you like? You want us to contribute more? Do you want more? You want us to contribute more? Do you want more in an HSA? What works best for you? How can we help? Um, and I know it's, the number is going to look bigger, but I really think it's going to bring that overall deficit down if we do it right. I just, I need the smart number folks to take a look at it.
How would increasing the the employer contribution affect the employee personally?
Um, it could potentially reduce their monthly rate.
Got it.
So it's just a a scale. So if you have five hundred fifty-five over here and you have forty-nine dollars over here, if this one's going to pay ten dollars more, then that means it will be thirty-nine for this side.
Understood.
So it depends on how we want to balance out. The goal is to have it at zero. But again, whatever is unfunded um at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year, at the end of the plan year, we'll report back uh to to administration and to the board of trustees in respect to how uh we're anticipating for the future to look.
Thank you.
I um, so I understand the back recommendation of one seventeen across the board, but um I believe it's unfair. I believe the the tiered approach, I mean, like um, I wish my homeowner's insurance was still what I was paying when I was only paying renter's insurance. You know, however, um, my insurance company is responsible, or for that matter, me, right? Um, for a lot more now than when I was a renter, you know? And I think that tiered distribution approach is is fair. Um, I think it's punitive when it's the same all the way across, and it's very unfair, because if I'm not using it a whole lot, why should I have to carry, you know, the larger burden? Um, and so that tiered approach where, yes, okay, for 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 your particular tier, these are the associated costs, and therefore that's going to be distributed for everybody in that tier. I think that is more equitable um approach. And it also, I mean, just looking at the rates, you can clearly see that our employee only, they don't use the coverage that much. And for them to go from zero to one seventeen, knowing that their particular expenses for that tier aren't that high. I mean, and 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 maybe they are, but there are a lot more members in that group. I don't know. But knowing that each of those categories was based on, you know, the tier, it seems to be that the more equitable approach would be that 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 distributed um uh premium cost. Um, at any rate, okay. I mean, I I think I was just thinking out loud. There's no question. I'm just thinking out loud. All right. Any other questions?
I'm gonna have a million later, but for now, we're good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carmona.
Thank you, everyone.
Wait, I'm sorry, one more. Just again. This will be coming to the board at very latest, the November board meeting, correct?
I think what we would probably need to do, uh, so we we have a, at least some sort of enrollment period. We may need to have a a board, a special board meeting as soon as the votes are canvassed, uh, that way we can make an informed decision. Uh, I forget the date on on the candidacy, the candidacy date for the VADER, but uh that would it would be around that time or certainly that week.
Okay, sounds good.
Are we still going to add a workshop in October?
Yeah, I would like to. I don't know if we add it to the regular board meeting or at another time, but we'll definitely need one more.
Sounds good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmona. Okay, moving on then. Um, five B, no, five A. Consider approval request for qualifications, number E two six one six. Ms. Garcia and Ms. Fierro, please.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, members of the board, Superintendent Mr. Vasquez, Liliana Fierro, Director of Resilience and Construction, and with me, Gabby Garcia, Director of Purchasing. So we're here uh to present the outcome of the solicitation process for professional services related to the district's um facilities planning and assessment. At the regular board meeting on August twentieth, the board trustees approved the issuance of a request for qualifications or RFQ for the following services. Facility condition assessment, long range facility master plan, deferred maintenance plan, preventive maintenance strategy development, demographic and enrollment projection study. On September ninth, the purchasing department received responses through the RFQ number E twenty-six sixteen from eight firms. The administr uh administrative review committee, composed of Chief Financial Officer, Director of Maintenance, Director of Processing, and myself as chair, evaluated all submissions of September eleven in accordance with the district's procedure for selection of professional services outlined in the CBB local. Based on the scoring results, the top three ranked firms were invited to present to the committee on September nineteenth. These firms were ASA Architects, Park Hill Smith and Cooper, and Pluger Architects. Following the presentations and final review of qualifications, the committee recommends Park Hill Smith and Cooper for consideration has selected provided for professional services. We believe this firm brings expertise, experience, and a strategic approach necessary to support the district's long-term facilities planning and maintenance goals. We're happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve made by Ms. Regera, seconded by Ms. Garde. Discussion, Mr. Woodcraft?
So I did have a couple of questions. Um, I know that the cost of the district was to be determined.
Yes, sir.
So a little bit more fidelity on that. What, do we know how long we're looking at having them on for, what the cost per year is, any, anything, or just?
On the related to the cost? Okay, so now if uh it's approved tonight, the next step will be the negotiations with the firm. Of course, legal counsel will involve. Now, once we have the the contract and the the negotiations done, that will be presented to the board as a contract. That's when you approved, and that's when, after the approval, we start the 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 work, right? The the professional services.
Perfect. And in the event that isn't to our liking, we can come back and look at one of the other two companies, correct? That's all I needed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So then, just to be clear, this was just a request for qualifications. Based on their response, we know that Park Hill is uh qualified to provide the service. Now comes the discussion about, okay, this is what at a very high level, we were looking for. Now, what are you going to do, or what do you propose you do for us? They could come with a plan for ten thousand dollars, they could come with a plan for ten million dollars. And then we just sit there and 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 let's say it's ten million, we say, okay, that's way too much. Let's scale that back. Really, what we're looking for is, you know, items A, C, and L. What's that cost going to be? And, you know, if that scope, whatever meets our needs, then you come back to us. Say, this is the contract, this is the cost, and then at that point, approve, not approve, but that's why the cost is still TBD, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to be sure I understood correctly. Any other discussion? No. Okay, so motion made by Mr. Regera, seconded by Ms. Garde. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on then to consider approval of RFQ number E two six two zero, professional tax services. Mr. Solis and Ms. Garcia, please.
Uh, good evening again, Board President Nahara, members of the board, Superintendent Vasquez, David Solis, Chief Financial Officer for the district. So last year, as you remember, we purchased twenty-five electric buses along with their charging stations. Um, through a federal clean energy program, these buses qualify approximately nine hundred thousand in direct IRS payments uh with additional credits available for our charging stations. Uh, combined, we estimate over one million dollars in potential funding available. Uh, so to make sure that all the requirements uh and capture every dollar available, we are asking for your consideration of approval this evening to contract with a professional tax credit service. Uh, they will handle the registration, filings, and compliance that the district can secure these federal funds. Um, do you have any questions?
Questions. Mr. Solis, was this a single source, or were they the only one that responded?
So they were the only one that responded. I can tell you that the um the RFQ went out to over seven hundred, a little more than seven hundred um entities uh to provide the service, but we only had one responding.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Woodcraft, seconded by Ms. Garde. Discussion, Mr. Solis. And um the cost to the district is only a uh proportion of anything that they're able to collect, right? So if they provide services, they evaluate, whatever it is they're going to evaluate and say, I'm sorry, there's no opportunity, then our cost is zero. But if they come back and say, all right, we found one point five million dollars, then the cost to the, and and that would be a one point five million dollar recovery. And the fee then would be a portion of that one point five million that comes back to the district, right?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Motion by Mr. Woodcraft, seconded by Ms. Garde. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solis and Ms. Garcia. All right, there being no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is six thirty PM and the date is Tuesday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you.